The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Town Council meeting and ask you all to stand to say the pledge of allegiance, please. John, would you like to lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no presentations and recognitions tonight or public hearing. Any new items? Public comment. At this time, I'd ask anyone that would like to address the council to come forward and just give your name and address, and you have five minutes. Okay. Come right up.
My name is Pat Karwoski, and I live at 75 Tonx's Village, and I've lived in town for a little over fifty years. I am here, I know this is not your jurisdiction, and I know you've been kind enough to, Kathy has he, and kind enough to answer some questions I have about the Unionville development that is being planned by CenterPlan. And that's one of the reasons I'm here. I followed the issues related to this particular developer, Landino, in the newspaper, and I know you can't read, can't believe everything you read in the newspaper, but I did check with the reporter, and he, you know, he was very good, very honest about what he reported and where his sources were. And basically, just to quickly go over my concerns, he, Landino is a CEO of CenterPlan Construction. And when I realized that, after going to the hearing, I did go to the hearing at the TPZ, that he was going to be awarded the contract, I expressed concern and talked to a couple people in Farmington because I realized the problems that were starting to brew in Hartford, as long before it hit the newspapers. Now, he was supposed to be doing the Dunkin' Donuts Ballpark in Hartford. Now, the developers, Landino, CenterPlan, sued the city of Hartford because they felt they were wrongly terminated, they were sinking an injunction, and it's gone back and forth, and kind of a nasty kind of a thing. I wondered, because of his legal and financial problems associated with this, oh, and by the way, that he's been awarded or appointed a CEO, Landino, of a casino, too. So he's, he's now got another enterprise that he's trying to juggle. Plus, in the paper, they said that he had about six to eight active projects and six to eight in a queue, and I'm assuming that some of the six, that six or eight is one our project that was approved in Unionville. So he's got quite a few things backed up, plus he's got these, this problem with Hartford and these lawsuits and back and forth kinds of problems. So I wrote, and Kathy was very good about answering my questions. Now, I used to be on the TPZ, and when I was on, there was an opportunity to be able to address the TPZ, just like you were allowing your citizens to do at the Town Council. And other than now, the public comment at a hearing, specific just for the hearing on an application, there's no opportunity to address them. So that's why I was coming back to you. Remembered that if a project had been approved, that, I remembered that basically you had to start that project within one year's time of approval. And I checked on the regs, and Section K, page eighty-eight of the regs, does say that if they do not start, and by starting a project, it means not just pushing some dirt around, it means basically that they have to do something as obvious as starting a foundation, you know, something concrete. Now, this particular development is going to cause some issues and some delays. As a matter of fact, the TPZ put a delay on it because they don't want the remediation of that site, which is contaminated, to be done while the children are in school. So I can understand the developer having some issues with this, but nothing has been done. The time is going to expire, his year, November, let's see, you put the date, November ninth. So he has to come back for an extension. And my understanding is tomorrow night, he's going to be coming back for an extension to the TPZ. However, I feel frustrated because there's no way that I can go to the TPZ and say, "Look, I have, I have a concern, I used to be on the TPZ, I understand the process, this developer, you know, I'm worried with his history now, that he will not meet the commitment and the demands that are required by law for him to make this project a whole and complete." So there's no way to address it. And I don't know whether or not the TPZ is influenced in any way, shape, or form by the council, or that they can reconsider their policies related to public comment. But it is too much, it's become too much closed and veiled in, I don't want to say secrecy, because that's conspiracy stuff, and we got enough of that stuff being talked about already with our national election, so it's not that. It really just has to do with being open and being able to address concerns and to hear what those concerns are from the public and to, again, because sometimes we do have good ideas, and the, and commission members and people can, can take some of these ideas and use them. And I would hope that they would, with something that's as controversial as this, give an opportunity to the public to say, to address them. And I can't do that, so I'm here to all of you, and that's all I wanted to, to ask you, if there's some way that you could speak to them, see if they would like to change those rules and regulations. I mean, our hearings, I know they went to two o'clock in the morning, we always met a lot longer than the Town Council did, but at least we gave the citizens every opportunity because what they do truly, as what you do, affects everybody in the Town of Farmington. So that's my appeal and my hope, and I think that we need to watch this particular project very carefully. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Reading of the minutes.
I move to accept the minutes of the September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
All right, I move to accept the minutes of the September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Any communications? Kathy, no? Report of committees. UConn Committee, no report. Land acquisition.
Nothing new to report.
Green efforts.
Nothing to report.
Joint Town of Farmington, City of Hartford, nothing new right now. Bike Committee.
Nothing to report.
Gateway.
Kathy will give a report in her manager's report on that.
Okay. Web page.
Nothing to report.
High School Building Committee.
The committee is moving forward, entering into contracts and hiring owners' representatives and construction managers, one of each. And so that, that is ongoing with subcommittees to handle those contracts. And the only thing upcoming is that there is a report coming from the education consultant regarding the education and community vision, visioning sessions that were held. We saw a draft of that, and I believe the Board of Ed is getting a draft of that at their special meeting this week, but we are expecting the floor report to come back to the committee sometime within the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay. Report of the council chair and liaisons. Chair report. And we are, just to piggyback off of Building Committee, we're hoping in November to have them come before us, the Building Committee, and just give us an update of what they're doing, so that it can be out, out to the public by the, on TV then, which would be great. We also are, just for people to, to know, on October twenty-fifth, we're going to have, on our meeting, there'll be two topics, and it'll be the Rails to Trails, which is our Goal Thirty-One, and the Bike Committee, which is Goal Seven. So we're going to have an update on what's going on in town with those two, those two committees. And I will also, I know it sounds early, we're only in October, but I'm going to send out some dates for our Christmas get-together, so, just so we can get something on the calendar. Board of Education liaison.
They, the Board of Education will be holding a special meeting Thursday evening to ratify the teacher's contract. And that's really about it.
Okay. UVIA.
The Unionville Festival was a wonderful success, so thank you very much to the UVIA members who pulled it off again and did a wonderful job, as well as the businesses and organizations that took part and had tables and booths, and everyone who came and attended. It was, it was wonderful, perfect weather, and it all went beautifully.
Thank you. I think they've only had one, one time of rain in all the years that they've had the festival, yes, and it poured and was muddy, but, so it was a great day. Thank you. TPZ.
I have nothing new to report. Last night, their meeting was not held due to the holiday, and it will be tomorrow night, so next meeting I will report.
Okay. WPCA.
Nothing new.
Economic Development.
Nothing to report.
Human Relations. Oh, maybe soon. Chamber of Commerce.
The Farmington Chamber of Commerce will be meeting Thursday evening as well, at the Farmington Gardens, one of my favorite venues in town. And that will start at five-thirty. That will be their business after hours. They are also working in conjunction with the Farmington Exchange Club, one of my favorite organizations in town, to put on a candidate's forum this October twenty-fourth, is what it's slated for.
That's right.
Invitations have been sent out to the eight candidates running in town. We have two House, two House races and two Senate races with two candidates each, so hopefully, most, if not all, will be able to make it, and that will be co-hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and the Exchange Club at Farmington High School Auditorium.
Oh, good.
And probably, I don't, we don't, I don't have an exact time, but we'll.
Probably seven, bless you.
Probably seven o'clock, so we'll look for more upcoming from both of those groups.
Okay. And that'll, I'm sure, will be on a website.
Yes. Well, yeah, there'll be a press release put out, and it should be on both of the organizations' websites.
Okay.
On our public calendar.
Yeah.
On our new public calendar.
Public calendar.
We go.
Great, great.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Report of the Town Manager. Kathy.
You have the written report in front of you. I thought maybe I'd start with the quarterly reports and just highlight some of the reports that are there. As you can see, we've been very busy for our last quarter. Couple things to start. Talk about, our first one, just some of the committees, our Gateway Committee, our Gateway Committee has been very busy, and we are, the committee met on September twenty-eighth to start discussing the vision for the area. BL Companies will gather information along with the results of the market study that was done to start to begin to develop conceptual drawings for the area. So I don't know if anyone got, is on the mailing list, but we got a survey of different types of, what, what they want the area to look like architecturally, and so we're collecting that data. We're meeting again, I think, next week, and we're going to give them consensus to start doing some designs for us. So it's been, it's been very exciting, and the other thing was is that the Route Four project, you know, that's going right through the Gateway, and we met with the DOT, and we have obtained preliminary approval from DOT for ninety-nine percent of the enhancements, so that's very good news, and we're moving along with that. So that's what's going on with the Gateway. One that's always of interest is Goal Three, is the state DOT projects. What I did is, on the second page, is that I gave a, a little cheat sheet, this document right here. It's kind of, what's the project's name, what's the status, and when it's going to be complete. That's usually what people want to know, so I'll just go through that quickly. The baggage road, that's on Route Four, as you know, that's in the construction phase. It's twenty percent complete, and it's going to be, it's slated for completion in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. We have the Rails to Trails going on in Plainville, that's in the construction phase. The construction is ten percent complete, and that will be, the completion date is in the fall of two thousand and seventeen. The intersection improvements in New Britton Avenue, that's in the design phase, that's thirty-five percent complete. The design is to be completed in the spring, coming up in two thousand and sixteen. The construction to begin in the fall of two thousand and sixteen. And just a note on that is that, that is, there's some property taking, so that sometimes has delays, but that's what it's targeted for. The Route Four Crog Study is in the design phase, and the South Road Construction is in the construction phase, and that should be done in the fall of two thousand and seventeen. There's also the details on the first page that tells you more about the projects, but I think that cheat sheet, that's what we always get people to ask about, is when it's going to be done.
Kathy, the project, the New Britton Avenue project.
Yep.
I'm getting a lot of questions concerning the widening of South Main Street, and the fact that the new restaurant has built a patio right up to the edge of the sidewalk, which doesn't look like it has a lot of room for widening.
Well, let me see if Russ has, knows about that.
So you're not going to be acquiring any of the property beyond the right of?
On that corner, correct. Maybe a little corner, but not affecting his patio. That was never intended there.
The other state DOT projects is, we're working with the DOT on to add a, improvements to Route Ten and Route Four, including the northbound right turn lane, and that, Russ has been working on that, and that's going to be incorporated in the, in the project that we're doing right now. And the river crossing, which we had a, a meeting about last month about that, so that's the third bridge. So we had a workshop, and we're still moving forward with that, so that's happening. The Bicycle Advisory Committee is, is going to be giving us a report in conjunction with the Rails to Trails, we thought that at the next meeting. They've been active in doing various things. The other thing, we are going to talk about, whether it's at the bicycle level or at the, which, Russ or Matt, about parking lots. We've been getting a lot of questions about the need, and is there enough parking lots for the Rails to Trails, for the bikes, and things like that, so we're going to have some discussion about that, too, at the next, at our next October meeting. Just, we have transferred one of our existing patrol officers into our traffic unit, and so that has happened the first week. So that officer went through a stringent interview process, competing against other patrol officers, and we did now have a new traffic unit officer, and they're, this was, they just started this week. So we have that, and then we will be backfilling a new regular patrol officer. So they're going to be working with the Traffic Review Board. They've been very active on doing some various things, and this new officer, new to the position, he's not a new officer, he will be really a community officer, working with the community, and working with the Traffic Review Board, and tracking various things, and we're getting that up and running, so that's something that's going on.
Go ahead.
Are you able to say who he is?
Yes. It's Kyle Nodding.
Kyle Nodding?
Nodding, right? That's not, Nodding?
Kyle.
Nodding, yeah. So, he, so that's who it is.
And I just want to ask if, when I read through this, one of the things that we talked about during the budget season was this officer having part of the time doing something in Unionville.
Yep.
And I've had people say to me, you, you know, "I thought you hired a, someone new to do some, you know, work in Unionville, so the traffic wasn't as bad, and what's happening?" And I said, you know, "We're going to be getting a report about it." So, so the truth of it is, it's, the person is going to be starting now.
Right.
And, you know, that hopefully, the person there will be monitoring.
Yep, Unionville.
So that they will, Unionville, so that the, the traffic won't be going through the center and, you know, where you can't even walk, I mean, drive a car through, that everything will be monitored, so people will realize there's somebody watching them, so they won't do that.
Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, and we just, they had to go through a process and set up what the duties were and all those, so he just started.
That should be happening now.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Just so that's still one of the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. Let me see what other ones I'd like to highlight. Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrade, Meredith gave a, a report last month, but that project is, is going knock wood very well, and they've been working with our contractor, Nickerson, and Wright Peers from the beginning of the project to find cost savings and value engineering ideas, and the collaboration has resulted in approximately five hundred thousand dollars in project credits. It's also moving very fast. It's moving very fast. So that's, with between weather and what's been going on, so that's, that's a, that's been going well. Patterson Park Parcel, this is, we did have some progress, and I think Nancy gave an update at the last meeting, but we have reached out to the Hartford again, and it, the parcel has been transferred to the Treasurer's Office. We met with Treasurer Cloud in, I think, in the mid-August, and then it was going to a city council meeting, and then they were going to be, going to a council meeting after October seventeenth, so we're going to track back with them, but we did get some positive feedback from Treasurer Cloud, and we'll see what happens after October sixteenth, so, seventeenth, I'm sorry. Burn Building, I don't know if anyone's been up there, but feel free to take a, a ride. It's, it's almost done, and it, you will, you'll be getting your invitations for our opening on Saturday, November fifth, at one P.M. So that project's been going really well. I hate to say the word, but as you all know, is that we're going to be going through a revow, and the Town Assessor has developed requests for proposals to find a qualified appraisal firm, and those requests are due back on October seventh, which is today. They've come back, I guess, I haven't heard what the results are, and we will be, they will be submitting a recommendation to the Town Council at your next meeting, so that's moving along for the revow. Meredith gave us a briefing on the High School Committee, very, very busy between hiring our owners' reps.
Just change.
Yeah, I got to change their names.
Lots going on there.
Kathy, before you move on, can I interject? I just, I should have said this during my meeting, but the committee members actually really wanted me to express to the council the incredible amount of work that Kathy and town staff are doing, including Russ back there, and Kat is just doing, and they're just doing the volumes of work. It's unbelievable. So they wanted me to express that, and I forgot during my report, so thank you very much.
So, thank you, and it's, it has been busy. We've had, we've, we're trying, getting our project team together, as Meredith said, the construction manager, the owners' rep, we've already had the architect, so we're having regular committee meetings, and then we're also having subcommittee meetings to get contracts together. And the school system is working on the educational specs. We have a meeting tomorrow to go meet with the state about the new laws on construction grants and things like that, so we're meeting with the commissioner, and the committee chair, and I, and the school people are going to that tomorrow, so more to come on that. But it's been very busy, but moving along. Green Efforts Committee, another busy group. They have been doing quite a bit with their community municipal pledge. One thing I wanted to just kind of note that, it's, it's kind of been under the radar a little bit, but we have been awarded, as you probably remember, one ten thousand dollar grant to date, and are close to being able to earn another ten thousand dollar grant. Additionally, we've received points for the installation of solar systems and for renewable energy outreach programs. The renewable energy points have been redeemed, and we've been awarded eighteen thousand dollars. So it is a, they, we've been working hard on some of these things, the group has been, and receiving money back. Our, our never-ending municipal exterior lighting project has made some progress, and so hopefully, that will, will be, I think they've gone through the town planning and zoning to get the right kind of lighting, and we are hoping to start in the summer of two thousand and seventeen.
Quick question.
Sure.
Just on the solar panel installation.
Yes.
Does, has the town installed solar panels anywhere? Or is that?
No.
That's in regards to the program that we did, the couple of years ago, the Go Solar, whatever it was called?
Yes, now, now, we have been working on identifying locations to put in solar panels throughout the town, yeah, but it's not, move forward.
So, and they had the annual cleanup day and some various things. One thing, it's not mentioned here in, with the Green Committee, but Russ and Shannon in Planning Department have been actively looking at the purchasing of municipal street lights, and so that may be something that will be coming up in the future about purchasing, again, like a performance contract that we did, where we change up the lighting and things like that. So that's something that they're going to be giving me a report on in the near future. Our Rails to Trails, as you know, are, people obviously have been on New Britton Avenue, and what's been going on there, it's a massive project, and there's going to be a bridge across Route Six, so that's been going well. And I think, I didn't, I tried to just highlight, I thought, what would be important, and I don't know if you have any specific questions about the quarterly report, before I move on to some of the other things in the manager's report.
So I have a question concerning the Goal Thirty-One, which is the bi-annual trail meeting?
Yes.
Last time we did that, we did it over the community center. We tracked a, a crowd of about a hundred instructed residents, and it was a back and forth between the residents and presenters. This seems like it's going to be more of a presentation to the Town Council.
Well, I think, I mean, if there's an interest, I'm not against opening it up, doing some publicity, and, you know, doing it to the, to the public and having, we thought it was a good match, and also especially since the trails going across, you know, Route Six, you know, we could try, you know, Russ, you, you don't have any objection to that?
Yeah, I mean, updating the, the council on all the trails projects would be a good thing, but in addition, I think that the residents liked the fact that there was a focused meeting concerning the trails, there did seem to be a lot of interest.
So would you want to do another meeting, or update the council on those two, and then do another meeting in the spring, more of a community meeting, or can this be the community meeting? I'm just, I mean, what, I counsel, too, would you, you know, what do you, would you like to do?
I have an answer, but I don't know if you really want to. I thought that meeting went very well.
Then maybe.
We went over all our trails, our bike paths, the rails and trails, and I think it was a successful meeting. I think people walked out, it's an additional added to our trail system.
It would be something similar to what you're going to give to the council, correct?
Correct.
Right?
Similar to what we did, that was two years ago, maybe three years ago.
Two years ago.
All right, so why don't, why don't this be, you can do basically the presentation that you would be doing to the council, and then we set something up more as a community meeting in the spring?
Correct.
Okay.
And if that forum worked well, and you had a lot of people come, why not do the same thing? Sounds good, okay?
All right.
It really wasn't that long, maybe about an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, no, it wasn't that long at all.
Okay, good. All right, we'll do that.
And that's a good, spring sounds like good timing, too, because that's when everything will get up and running again, and people will be aware that, that the projects are going on, you know, there're going to be traffic, and there's going to be construction, and so it'll be.
We're talking trails.
Oh, but the bridge, but the bridge over Route Six.
And I think we should still, even though we didn't put in, I think we should add what the Bike Committee's doing, too, as part of the trip, when we do that meeting, too.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have that part, put it all together, I think it's a good match.
Okay. And you're just going to put that in?
Oh, yeah, yeah. One of the things that Nancy and I were talking about based on the last meeting is that, I'm going to add another goal for our next meeting, just to have an update on a yearly basis on the farm. We had talked about, so I'll just add, I'll find it, and for next meeting, I'll just put where I'm going to add it, and then you guys can add it to the goals, so then, on a yearly basis, so it doesn't get lost. You'll just get a little, a quarterly, not a quarterly, a yearly report on the farm, and then if you guys want further information, you can do whatever you'd like, but then we can have a more active reporting on it.
And it'll just come in Kathy's report?
Yeah.
You know, at some point during the, during the year, when it's appropriate?
Okay.
Just so it's not at the end of the process.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other items, two, two really positive things are, a golf course recently received an award from the Farmington Valley Visitor Association, is one of the favorite golf courses in the Farmington Valley, so that was, I was glad to hear that. So that was, I was glad to hear that. And the other award was is that Russ and his engineering staff had received the South Road Award. And this, we received an award from the Capital Region Council of Governments in recognition of designing and expediting the delivery of the South Road Reconstruction Project. It's my understanding that they received the award because by the, from how quickly we were able to design the project, go out to bid, and do the project. And so I think it's notable two ways. One is that Russ and his staff, their approach has been to design upfront and then apply for the money, and we've been getting quite a bit of money. And the second thing is, is that being shovel-ready, and we're being recognized for that, shows that we're able to spend the money, which they want us to, and hopefully, they'll continue to give us more money. So congratulations, Russ. I know you've worked really hard to, South Road is going to be done. It's one of the quickest projects that we were able to do, so, yep, so congratulations on that. The other thing, road reconstruction update. This is just an update of what went on over the summer and last spring, that some of the road paving projects, so the Farmington Village area, that was paved, the Lake Garda area, the Cedar Lane area, also all catch basins, and were replaced along the curbing and topsoil and seeding as required. And coming up, our 2017 construction season, we're looking at Pinnacle Road area, Oakland Gardens area, and the Lovely Street area. Again, always make note, depending on how the winter goes, its contingent on if something, you know, things do move around, but that's what we're looking to do. Conservation easement to Farmington Land Trust. If you remember when we had purchased the IUD property, that's one of the things that the land trust had asked about, is the town putting an additional conservation easement on behalf of the land trust for some extra protection on that piece of property. We have been working with the land trust through the Land Acquisition Committee about if we were going to do that, they would be, also be, take care of the project. I mean, trust, land trust stewardships for the project. And one of the things that I thought was important is that if we were, if the council was interested in doing this, I would wanted to know what the land trust was going to be doing in return, and having a more formal type of arrangement with the land trust. So that's what they've been working on, and they've been coming up with some different things. In my report, as you can see, you know, we don't have the town staff to monitor a lot of this open space, so I think it's a valuable, a valuable thing that the land trust could do for us. I did have a couple of concerns, and I think that we could work on them, is that, again, putting a conservation easement, is that we're giving them rights to this property, that they have rights to it? But we could write the easement a certain way that we're not really giving up our rights. For like, for instance, I want to make sure that if they say we need to take down a tree, and we say we don't need to take it down right now, we haven't given up that right that says the land trust can tell us to take down a tree. I also think it's important, in their proposal, they had that they wanted to put land trust, showing the markings, saying, I think it has to be that it's the Town of Farmington property. I think that's very important, too. I think that this property, we're going to have, probably, hopefully knock wood, we're going to get a state grant, which is going to be another easement on it. This would really protect it. I mean, again, it's meant for open space, but we are giving away, not, we are giving our rights to the land trust part of it, that, you know, it's not going to be developed. But the intent is, it's never going to be developed anyway. So I think it's a nice partnership that they're doing this, they have the conservation easement. I would come up with the attorneys, we'd be clear about what the easement is. But if the council had, I know when we talked about it way back, you all expressed an interest in something like this. So, like I said, I think it does include positive benefits to the town, including bringing our organizations closer together with the mutual goal of preserving open space. And it should be done without giving up our control or visible ownership of the property. Those would be the two things that are important to me.
Right. And I think, you know, the Town of Farmington, the citizens of Farmington bought this property, so it's the, you know, it's the Town of Farmington property. That's important. And also that the, I think it's great to have the partnership with the land trust, but it's also suggestions that they can give as to what should be done, and certainly their help in taking care of the property, I think, is a positive one. So I think if you write something up that, you know, allows for those, you know...
What would be the next steps is that would be, you know, this would be the things that they would do for us, and then they would have to report on, I think we asked for a yearly basis, and they would give us a report, which would be great. But then we would work with the attorneys on a conservation easement, and then that conservation easement would come back to the council to authorize me to sign the conservation easement, if that's, so that would be the next step. If the council was interested, then I would start working on a conservation easement.
Is that okay with the council?
Yeah. I mean, I think this kind of cooperation is really helpful and really important. And I also think that one of the things I'd be interested in is to see how the land trust organization can bring people, volunteers, together to work on property and to do things like removal of invasives. And, you know, if they show that they can bring, organize the volunteers to work on those properties, those open spaces, to improve them, then this potentially gives us an avenue for future expansion of their partnership in other areas. Because one of the things, obviously, we've acquired a lot of open space, and some of the open space has just been left alone.
Yeah. I can think of open space that needs to be addressed.
Right.
And we just don't have the manpower to do it. And so a partnership of this nature really is a, could be a win for both, for the town in general. So I agree.
Just one question, Kathy. The proposal from the land trust that we have here, will that still be tweaked a little on behalf of their proposal, too?
Yeah, I think they sent this to us, and there's a couple of things that I need to tweak on it.
Yeah.
And so we'll probably work back and forth with it. But in general, this, in concept, this is what we like.
Yeah.
And really, the more important is that the easement is correct, that we have the easement.
Yeah.
But we'll work on this and talk to them, and go, and I'll include the land acquisition to go through that with them.
Okay. Yeah, because we meet this week.
Good. So I'll move ahead on that. We had a bond sale, and so we sold $5,500,000 in general obligation bonds. The bonds were issued for 15-year maturity. Let's see, the town received four bids. The low bidder offered rates ranging from 2% to 4% depending on the maturity date, with a premium of $262,945. When the various rates and maturities are netted out against the premium received, the true interest cost to the town is 1.8758%. The number of bids received by the town is a positive sign that the Town of Farmington debt is well-regarded in the bond marketplace. Additionally, receiving an interest rate of less than 2% for a long-term bond issue is very good development for the town, and also for our debt service budget. We expected, I think Joe has said, that he was looking at it was going to be closer to 2%, so that we went under that. We were very happy. Joe and our bond counsel really work hard to see when they're going to issue the debt, and they've been doing an excellent job for us on that. And we also, I think it said here, yeah, that the bonds, which were rated AAA by Moody's, too. So that's important to note. So that's it for the manager's report. It's been a busy quarter, and I don't know if you have any questions or comments.
Good job.
So does the Westwood, does this go out in a publication?
I think so, yeah.
Well, that's great.
I think so.
And that should entice more people to come there. We were wondering how to market and what to do, so that's great.
No.
Okay, thank you. A lot of work's going on, been done, and continues to go on, so, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to accept that?
Yes, we do.
All right. I move to accept the October 11th report of the town manager.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. John, appointments.
So L5, I'd like to move that Ann Wolfing be appointed to the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission as an alternate for the balance of a three-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2017.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Item L6, the Brian Connolly be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2018.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Item L7, the John Karwoski would be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2018.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Item L10, the Peter Bigdigin be appointed to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a balance of a five-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Okay, thanks, John. Any old business? New business? N1.
Okay, so I'll read a motion to get us started. I move that the town manager is authorized to implement the following changes to the attached 199 Town Farm Road, Residents and Barns, and the attached 184 Town Farm Road Fields lease agreement with Roger and Isabel Phillips, and is authorized to sign the amended agreement. So the amended parts are as follows. Section 2, initial term. The initial term of this lease, the initial term, shall commence on October 1st, 2016, the commencement date, and terminate on September 30th, 2019, unless extended or terminated as provided for below. And Section 4, rental. During the lease term, the Lessee covenants and agrees to pay annual rent to the town of $1 payable on or before October 1st of each year this agreement is in effect. Per the 184 Town Farm Road lease agreement, the Lessee covenants and agrees to pay rent to the town by way of the annual harvest from the premises equivalent to 10 community-supported agriculture shares, a monetary value of approximately $5,000. Lessee agrees to deliver Lessee's share to Farmington Food Pantry, subsidizing families or the needy, and Gifts of Love.
Could you read those three again, or give me a paper, please?
Sure, I can, yeah, I can do it. It's Farmington Food Pantry, and Gifts of Love are organizations. And then we're also including subsidizing CSAs to families or the needy.
Second.
Now, one of the things that we had talked about was the CSAs. Currently, it's 10 and $5,000, and there was some discussion about upping that. I don't know whether you want to put a specific number in the contract right now. I have some numbers. If we wanted to up the shares, 15 shares of 7,500, it just changes by the $50 a share. If you want to actually put something like that in, or 20 shares, whatever you feel, or do you want to leave those shares for now? And, you know, this will be now the three-year document. So I don't know if you, this, as I say, was the previous year, there was discussion about upping it. Do you want to change those two numbers right now?
So I'm fine with leaving it the way it is. One of the things that I recalled, that in addition to the 10 shares, they made considerable contributions directly to the Gifts of Love organization. And so my question would be, if we were giving 10 shares to Farmington Food Pantry, are we getting feedback that says they don't need 10 shares?
I don't know, I don't know that the Farmington Food Pantry was involved before. That was something we just, we just talked about in our conversation last time, John. And also, the Food Pantry and subsidizing family, another, some of, working through social services to possibly help some families. And we don't know, I have no idea how many or what that involves, but those are just some other things that were mentioned at the table in the last, at the last meeting. So I put those, I just thought if those are part of this, and they have that opportunity, that that's fine. We did mention specifically the Farmington Food Pantry, just because it's a Farmington-based organization. But, so, so that can be, yes, then that would be, I don't know that it would be specifically CSA shares, or just, you know, helping them, by giving them food.
I thought that the original lease was, the 10 shares went to the Farmington Food Pantry, but in addition to that, not part of the lease, the Phillips made large donations to the Gifts of Love.
What it is, is that it was never specific in the lease that it had to go to the Farmington Food Pantry.
Oh, got it.
So that's why we, that's why I think we've put the Farmington Food Pantry, to make sure that some of it was going to there. But what you've said, they are giving donations to all, to quite a bit of other organizations, too.
Yeah, okay.
So we just added Farmington Food Pantry in writing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think this was, this is helpful, because then it's, because it says, it said at the lease that the council could say where it went to. We just never said where it would go to. So I think this is putting it in there. I think that's very helpful.
Okay.
And I would hope that this isn't, it's not seen as being restrictive. You know, if there's anything else that maybe social services sees that they could help with, that they would certainly contact, you know, Kathy or something, and say, hey, this organization could use some help, or this family, and they, because of course, we don't know that, you know, know the families or anything. And also, the idea of the 10 shares, you know, if there's, I mean, I know, you know, when things come in in farms, sometimes there's more than, at one time, so much comes in at once, and it's like, okay, we need to have all the tomatoes go out, you know? So if they, they can up their output at some point, you know, I think that all of that's open for them to, for us to continue the discussion. So I just look at that as a kind of a beginning, and we'll see what...
Yeah, I mean, certainly, their actions, they weren't, didn't find confined to only 10 shares.
Yeah.
You know, they're very generous to a lot of groups.
So that seemed to be the consensus from the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So that's why we kind of put those numbers in. If anybody wants to, you know, to change anything, that certainly is, we certainly can do that, you know, just say something, so. And then, as we said before, we'll come, in a year, Kathy will bring it to the council under her report, and just let the community know where we stand and how things are going. So, okay. And if there's any additional information anybody wants, we'll take it from there. So, okay.
You devote?
All right. Yes, no? Okay, so we're all set. Any other questions or anything? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. N2.
All right, I move that the following appropriation transfers be made from and to the accounts listed below in the fiscal year 2015-16 general fund budget.
Second.
If you take your action item out, and we go to this page, I thought we could work off this page first, this one right here. And if you look at the revenues, you start up on the top, and you can see that we're working off the adjusted budget and the actual. So this is what we put in the budget, the adjusted budget, and what we actually got in revenues. And then you have the variance, positive or negative. So on the revenue side, you can see that our property taxes came over $533,000. Our license and permits were $282,000 less than expected. Our fines and penalties, our investment income, our grants and pilots, that's what we were talking about last time, those are the state grants. That was $99,000 under what we expected. Educational grants, $52,000 under what we expected. Our charges and our other revenue. But overall, because our property taxes were $533,738, that was a big swing, our revenues were $167,425,000 more than expected. And then in Joe's backup, I just wanted to make note, where we talk about the property taxes, it says, "We exceeded the budget by $318,000." The adjusted levy, the adjusted, I'm sorry, is that my right there? Yep. "The adjusted levy was slightly larger than projected, and the assessor's adjustments were less than expected. In addition, the tax office received a collection rate of 99.8%," which is really great. So, so that's just a summary of the revenues, and then I'll do a summary of the expenditures, and then we can ask, we can do some questions. But our expenditures were really, we had a really good year. If you look down on the last-hand column, you see a lot of, you know, $10,000 that we wrote less, but that's because, many of these are because of our personnel costs, are lump-summed in one account, and then we move them all into the budget. So we move in the salary increases and various things. So things to note, if you go through and you look all through our different expenditures, are what we expected was, we were $414,900. We did better than expected. So, in the expenditures, some things to note. In addition to salary savings, uh, that was resulted in vacancies throughout the year, savings were also realized in salary reserve account due to contract settlements coming in lower than the increases that we projected. As you know, the last year, we've been working on all our contracts, and so we did really quite well with that. We also had a nice, uh, not that much snow, and so the overtime due to the mild winter, and our police overtime because of the receipt of several grants for overtime for traffic enforcement. Our benefits savings, uh, due to vacancies, contract settlements, overtime expenses were $89,000. Our materials and supplies, office supplies, materials and miscellaneous, we were $15,000. Equipment, uh, the largest area savings resulted in the Police Department Uniform Account of $12,000. Also, other equipment, so we were $38,000. Contractual services is $118,000, and they were numerous areas, um, which included, um, some conference expenses. So we did really well in the fire, uh, the conference expenses in the manager's office, fire department, and planning and zoning. Building repair and maintenance, um, cost, we're, we did really well in those accounts. Uh, we're usually over. Again, I'm going to analyze that a little bit more, but that was a $19,000, and the largest under expenditure occurring in the fire department budget, which is one of the first times I've ever seen that, and, um, we're going to do an analysis, but if you remember, we have hired a new building maintenance person, and maybe some of that's, uh, he's been on board for a year now, so, you know, I'm not sure, but we're going to analyze that. Our legal services came in, our utilities, we did really great in the utilities because of oil savings, um, heating costs. We did have, um, some electricity expenses that were higher than expected, but that was because of the warm summer, so that was air conditioning and things of that nature. One of the things that we were able to do, uh, which I just wanted to note, is, uh, in the, it's that, you know, we have our hydrant account, and we have been one payment behind. You're supposed, and our auditors have been telling us, because we've been paying, by the time we pay the last bill, it's been showing up a year ahead. So, we have been not, we, we needed to make five payments in one year to get over the hump, and we have not, the auditors have asked us, said that this is something they wanted us to do, but it's expensive, and we have to make an extra payment. Because we did so well with our expenditures, we were able to make that extra payment this year. So now we're back on track with that. So that was really great that we were able to do that. We did, uh, with the debt service. And so, in summary, um, our revenue exceeded by 167,425, and expenditures were less than budgeted by 414,000, resulting in excess of revenue over expenditures of 582,000. When this amount is added to the fund balance, it increases our unassigned balance to 10.86% or $10,925,620. So, I just, you know, again, some of this was out of our hands with the snow and some various things, but I think, uh, we've tried hard to keep expenditures, um, on, on track, and, uh, congratulations to Joe with managing this for us, and, but we did have, I think, a really, a really very good year. A lot of things lined up for us, and, uh, we were able to see savings in accounts and some of the things that we did between our performance contracts, going out to bid, doing various things, um, I think has helped us out. So, I don't know if you have any specific questions?
Meredith?
I, I do have a question, and I'm, I don't know if this is the right place for this to go, but we get, we all get the Board of Education, um, documents for their meetings beforehand, and I don't know, I, so I'm looking at the education part and under expenditures, and it says that their variance is $3,000. But I, a couple of meetings ago, and I don't know, it might have been a month or two ago, I don't know at this point, it seemed to me that especially in their, um, insurance liability, that, that pocket of money, their expenditures seemed to be, their actual expenditures seemed to be significantly less than what they had budgeted for. And I'm wondering, where, where does that money go, or has that not shaken out entirely yet? Because it seemed as if they were up from, from that one financial report, something like $500,000, which I, I know can't possibly be right, right? But where, where do we find out about how that shakes out in the end?
We could ask the question. The bottom line is with the board, is that they are not obligated to return money, so they may have taken that money and spent it on other things. Or, depending on where that, where that report was, it could have been behind, you know, and they haven't gotten to that point yet. But we could, if you know what the report is, we'd be more than happy to do that and see how they got from there to here. I'd be more than happy to ask that.
And I don't know offhand which one it was. I mean, it was in, it was, it was in the insurance. You know, that we get these detailed things, and it says projected and actual, and there was a huge difference between what was projected and what was actual, and it looked as if there was quite a bit of money sitting there.
But also, to be fair, too, is that that insurance account may have been doing very well, but they may have had another account that was doing really poorly. And so they may have put that, as we do in some of ours, you know, if we have a really bad, uh, snow year, we may transfer money that has done really well. And so, that could happen, that could have happened, too.
But we'd see it.
We can, we can find out. Joe, you, do you understand the question for Meredith? All right, we can talk to Vince about it.
Okay. And we'll get that information.
Yep.
Thanks.
So, any, um, other questions?
One comment I want to make, and that's about the fund balance. I think that with the amount that we ended up, um, well, first of all, the fact that we did end up with those kind of funds, we realize the snow, it was a good snow year, but I think it's much more than that. It's the planning, and it's the, um, accounting that's done with the town, with you, Joe, and, and the town, and, and, uh, it's not just being careful, I mean, it's planning, and from year to year, and really knowing what you're looking at and what you're putting in to begin with, to make sure that we, to the best of your ability, which is certainly a very good ability, these, you know, with this, to show us where we are. And, and it's just, I, you know, it's a lot more than just not a, not a snow year. It's, it's great, um, great planning. And I think, I'm certainly delighted to see those funds, because we were able to put it in the fund balance. And that's something that we talked about last month with the, um, what we need to talk about before budget, to, excuse me, to make sure that we continue to fund the fund balance, um, so that we, you know, last year, they talked about possibly 12% that we should be at. And, you know, we're at about 11 now. So I think we need to really make a concerted effort, the, the council does, to, to hear from you, and, you know, and what you think we're going to be doing with the fund balance as far as the amount that we're going to be putting in there, and make sure it stays there, um, so we can keep our AAA rating. So, um, I mean, this all worked out really well, and the fact that it goes into the fund balance, which it should, so that it continues to stay at a level that we can be, you know, feel good about, certainly when our, uh, accountants come in in, in February and talk to us about this. So, you know, we're not at 12%, we're at 11, which is great, and, um, so, I just, I just want to say publicly that we need to keep an eye on that, as a council, too, and make sure we fund it, so. But thank you very much for, for this report, and, uh, and the work that's done all year, Kathy, with, with all of you. I mean, it's really great information. Comments about specific areas? Is there anything people want to ask about, or? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Uh, everyone in favor of, uh, item N two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, next one, N three.
I move that the following unobligated capital improvement project balances be transferred to the accounts listed below for the purpose of closing out various inactive CIP accounts and covering shortfalls in other CIP accounts.
Second.
Kathy?
As you know, um, usually on a yearly basis, we go through the capital improvement accounts and determine which projects are complete but still have money available, and which projects either are completed and not, and have shortfalls. Once this determination is made, we, um, we bring it to the council, that's what we're doing right now. And so we had $100,000 that, and 92, and that transfer those into those other accounts.
Questions? John?
So I understand the money's coming out of the various accounts. I mean, if you buy a rotary mower, and it costs less than you expected, there's extra left in the fund. What I find intriguing, that when you go down and look at all the, uh, projects that we did, we were able to go, come under budget, that the amount in total just happens to match up to the amount of money we're over budget in other items. How do we determine how these projects, the two accounts, how do they get that money?
Maybe Joe can answer that.
Sure. Basically, the accounts, the front accounts, those are closed accounts, the money's no longer needed, that money's moved out.
Yep.
And that's the driver. So, we have under expenditures of $100,000. The actual, uh, the other difference is, what's gone, they may not necessarily be over that amount of money, but majority of our, that amount of money, whatever was extra was thrown into those accounts to cover. So, I mean, it, it comes out because we balance it out, we have the extra money, we want to close those accounts, we're going to move the balances, and we're going to put them into the accounts to cover any overages, plus fund something that, you know, may need money, uh, going forward. That's simply what it is. I mean, I, if I had extra money up here in the top part, I'd probably, would throw more money to some, some of these other accounts that we pay.
So when I, when I look at the bottom, so let's take the high school track. So we, we're able to move over $854.
We have to cover the $854.
And that's what we're able to do with the money that's coming from other accounts.
Right. Exactly.
As we go down to these items, does the money that flowed over to those accounts now close those accounts at the bottom?
Right, all the money from those top accounts are going to flow into those at the bottom.
Yeah, and they're going to close the accounts in the bottom? Or those accounts?
It's going to close the majority of them. They will not close, um, they will not close rolling stock, because that's an ongoing account, that's where we buy all our vehicles from, because that account never closes. Um, and the street sweeper, we're still in the process of buying, that money will help us cover that, the cost of that.
Okay, so some of these items disable, enables us to pay everything we're, we're over.
Right.
Some of the items, like the rolling stock, you just sort of use the extra?
Right, that's, that's, in this, in this particular transfer, that rolling stock is the balancing, now balancing it.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, N four.
I move to approve the following resolution regarding pension benefits to former police employees in accordance with section 51-34 of the town code.
Second.
Kathy?
Just so you know, it, N four and N five, it's the same motion, except one is for, uh, former, um, police employees, and the other is for non-police employees. And it's my understanding that the Pension Board at this time has recommended to the council that no special benefit payment be made from the pension plan to retire police employees at this time. As you may or may not know, is that our retirement pension plan does not have a standard yearly cost of living type of increase that is, that automatically happens. According to our charter, or the pension plan, um, they, every five years, the Pension Board is, can look at, um, the plan, and they can make a determination if they want to do a cost of living, if they want to do a one-time payment, they want to do something for the retirees. And when I say they, they make a recommendation to the council, it's the council's choice, just so I'm clear on that. This, over the course of the last 10 or 10 years, uh, about 10 years ago, the Retirement Board did make a, um, a recommendation to the council, and the council did act on it. Five years ago, they reviewed it again, that was really at the height of the, this crash, they made a recommendation to the council, um, and the council, they did not, um, make any changes. It's my understanding that the majority of the reason why, at this point in time, because really, a lot of these people have not received a cost, any kind of cost of living or change in their pension benefit for 10 years, was because that the Pension Board feels strongly that before they can consider that, they would like the fund, that, they would like the plan to be funded at 80%. And because of the fact that we changed how we're funding our plan, we've made those changes, it's, it's funded at 74.7% and not at 80%. At this point in time, the other item is, and I know that the Pension Board has talked about some different things, and they've done different things, is that newly retired, uh, people that are on the pension plan can be, not everyone is exactly the same. You can have someone that retired 30 years ago, is a much different type of pension than someone that just retired five years ago. So, I know that the Pension Board has looked at different options that say, you have to be retired for X amount of time, or different things. But the bottom line is, is at this point, it looks to me that the Pension Board, for both non-police officers and police officers, are recommending to the council that no special benefit be awarded. The council, it is the council's prerogative that, um, they can do what they want. And so Joe is here, and Peter is part of the Pension Board, and there are some different things, um, maybe some options, if the council wanted to consider some other things. I had a, Joe and, had come up with a couple of ideas, and we could talk about that, and, Nancy, would you like to, or would you like me to talk about that?
Yeah, no, I can, in a minute.
Okay.
What, I have a question. I did go back and look at the code, and is the, is it the police and non-police, are they different motions because the charter sets them differently, Joe? Is that, okay.
Different plans.
Because I look, there's even the library separate from the, you know?
There's, there's actually, uh, three types of plans. And they're all, they're all by, by ordinance. There's a, uh, police, uh, plan has its own ordinance, the town plan, the non-police, they call it, have their own ordinance, and the library has their own ordinance. So there's three different, and there's three different provisions, or, I'm sorry, there's two different provisions for reviewing, uh, the benefit. Uh, one for the town, and one for the police. The library plan does not have a provision for reviewing the benefit and granting any type of call.
Does a FEGLA do that? It's not our, it's not the town's, right, is what I saw in the code, yeah. Okay.
So that's, that's the reason why it's a motion.
Okay. I just, I thought maybe so, when I did look back and saw that they were specifically under two different charter, you know, chapters in there, so. Okay. Okay, well, we can, I think, um, well, I'll just, I'm going to just speak to both of them, really, uh, right now, and then we can talk, speak after we move these, hopefully. When I, I did, I have heard some, um, things out there, and just some conversations about not, no increases in five years and five years previous to that. And I think, you know, I, the, the Pension Board, we know it went through a, quite a, an extensive, um, well, extensive look a couple of years ago, at really looking at the pension plan and how to fund it, and how to fund it appropriately. And, uh, so I, I completely appreciate the fact that they want to get to the 80%, and I'm from the 74, and the fact that they, uh, we want to be, we as a town in Farmington want to make sure that we are funding our pension, pension plan appropriately, so I, I respect that. In all of this, though, I, I had a little conversation about how we could look at, um, for council, for the council, to actually just look at, ask Joe to look into, um, what the different levels were, if there were many people that, um, my thought was, if there are people that were retired 30 years ago, and, uh, it appears that, I think there are few people, but, um, what level are they, is their pension at, and should they be looked at a little differently than the people that were hired last year, and, and where are they in this? So, with the councils, okay, I'd like Joe to just look into, um, what the, uh, level was, to look at what the possibility is for any additions or not, um, but through the council and our own budget. We can look at this and say, see if that's something that we might want to do, or might not want to do, or how is this funded? So I would just like to ask him to look, look at it, and see, um, where the levels are of the people that are retired. So if that's okay with the council, and just get some information. We wouldn't do anything at this point, but get some information, so we'd know, as a council, when we come into budget, we could always make some, um, changes, or, or do something, or, or just look at the, at the issues, so that we have a, a response to people as well. So if that's okay with the council?
That's fine. Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess one, who, I'd like, who makes up the Pension Board?
It's made up, the council does the appointments, except for, there's union representation for all the unions, and then there is, um, members of each political party that the council appoints.
Okay, so the political parties nominated, they're RTC, DTTC, and then we appoint them.
But then you do have, uh, you have the union people represented, too.
Right. Okay. Right, okay. So there's union representation as well. And how often do they meet?
Uh, once a month.
Okay.
Yeah, I, once, they don't meet once a month, once a quarter?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And so, as far as, like, for lack of a better way to describe it, expertise, as far as best practices, where, where does that come from?
Well, the people, we, I, the appointments, people that have it, Joe, we also have our audit, not, the actuaries, and all those people that we hire, the professional consultants. And the council has, I think, in general, done a very good job of trying to get people with some kind of background on the committee.
Sure.
So they've been doing that. And the committee has, like Nancy mentioned, over the last couple of years, really have studied the plan. We have some people that were brought into the plan, uh, members that have a really pretty good expertise on it, and that's why we've done substantial changes to our plan over the last, like, five years. We've updated it, had some different things that we've done.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm all for having Joe look into this, I'm just wondering, you know, how, how much weight we should put into overriding a recommendation?
Oh, oh, yeah.
From, from our pension board, that's really what I'm trying to get at, or trying to get an understanding of. So.
I think one of the things that I think is to be clear, is that I think that the Pension Board, my understanding, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's all about the eighty percent where it's being funded, and I, I understand that. What I think what has happened in the past is that they, the council, instead of taking the money out of the pension fund, they've taken it out of their own operating budget for a one-time type of expenditure.
Right.
And so then it's really not affecting the plan, it's not doing that, and that if the council can afford it during the budget time, they can put money in and say, this, based on what Nancy asked Joe to get, different kind of scenario, because not everyone's equal, and then the council can have a dollar amount at the budget, and if you can afford it during the budget time, which is really, I think, the Pension Board should not be too upset by that, because it's not really affecting the pension plan. It's really coming out of a one-time kind of.
Right. So we're, we're really kind of looking at two things here. It's us getting this thing funded up to eighty percent, which would then allow the Pension Board to, to make possibly a different recommendation than what they're at right now.
Right, at another time.
At another time, right.
That's a good statement, yeah. That's really the key here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We'd be doing this through our, our budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right.
So I have a question. I understand we're at seventy-four, we like to be at eighty, and at eighty, we feel we can cover all the obligations and possibly look at more. Is it five percent low because the investments haven't been what we expected, or because we aren't putting as much money into it as we should?
It's not the latter. It's a combination of investments, investment performance. The plan back in, the plan at one point was overbundied. It averaged around ninety-nine percent funded. What happened, two things happened back, basically six, seven years ago. One, the market crashed, and we lost probably about forty percent of the value of our investments. We've since recovered that, but at the same time, what's also happened is the liabilities, there's two components, there's one is your investments, and your investments always should match what your liabilities are. What has been happening, our investments are recovering back to the level they were previously, but our liabilities have gone well beyond that. Our liabilities, at one point, the difference between investments and liabilities was less than five hundred thousand dollars. Now the difference between investments and liabilities is twenty-three million dollars. And there's several reasons for that. One is the size of the workforce, it's the size of the pension, there's a change in actuarial tables. For example, for years, we estimated we figured, we were using mortality tables that said, you know, males die to sixty-five, females die to sixty-eight, you know, in mortality tables, males die to seventy-eight, females die to eighty-three. So you start doing things like that. Things such as changing your investment, your rate, assuming the rate of return on your investments. Everybody, not everybody, look, well, yeah, everybody in government, public pension plans for years assumed you're always going to get eight and a half percent a year in investment returns. Historically, that was always, up until the ten years, so that was always a realistic expectation. That's no longer an expectation, realistic expectation. So what we, the standard practice is, and everybody's doing it, we're actually a leader in it, is reducing our investment assumption. We've gone from eight and a half percent down to seven percent. That increases your liability, because your projection is, well, I'm going to earn eight and a half percent every year, well, now you're saying, I'm only going to earn seven percent every year, so you're, you're losing some of that when you're matching the liabilities to assets. That's, that's a long explanation, just saying. Liabilities have grown faster than, than investments. We've been making our contributions, and if you look at our contributions, instead of the increasing, we were just looking at, no, it was just giving an idea. In two thousand and seven, oh, actually, two thousand and three, your contribution was six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. That was the town's contribution to the pension plan. In two thousand and seven, it was nine hundred thousand dollars. This year, it was three point three million dollars. So it's, it's just, you know, shot up, again, because the liabilities have grown, again, investments have grown slowly, liabilities are growing much, much faster.
I'm assuming that the actuaries are updating their thoughts on, on death rates and so forth, so they're more accurately stating what our liabilities, so we have a better understanding of what it's actually going to be, not a misunderstanding.
Well, that's one of the things that the Board has done, because we were, we were all, like, between our investments, between the death rates, between everything, and that's why, over the last couple of years, if you remember, we've been putting more and more money into, because we had to have more accurate numbers.
Yeah, for a couple of years in a row, that was a big, big chunk in the budget, was three hundred and something thousand to be three hundred and fifty-two or something.
Extra.
You know, extra money to put in a couple of years in a row, and we.
Yeah. And in one year, we increased it by eight hundred thousand dollars. So it just, you know, it's just shot up dramatically. So, and unfortunately, it's going to continue for a while, and then it will level off, and then it will slowly decrease. So, but you know, you're talking three years out.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts? Okay, all right, thank you. So we have N four on the floor. It's for a motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I thought we were going to, isn't Joe going to bring back more information?
Well, yes, but, but that's for us, for our budget.
Okay.
But right now, this is the recommendation of the Pension Committee.
Okay.
So.
So we're looking to approve this tonight, and then give more information?
That's my thought, John.
Okay.
But so that, yeah, so that we can, we're, we're accepting the pension and respecting their, trying to get to the eighty. But as a council, we can look at this for the people that are concerned, the people in, in this, in the retirement, you know, that are retired.
Okay, deny.
Pardon me?
Uh, deny.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Joe?
I was just going to point out the way the motion is written, it says at this time.
Yes, yes.
It's right at this moment in time.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't exclude you from going forward and making something.
And changing it in the future, yeah. Okay. Thank you, sorry for the confusion. Okay, N five.
Right. I move to approve the following resolution regarding pension benefits to former non-police employees in accordance with section fifty-one dash sixty-nine of the town code, that no special benefit payment be made from the pension plan to retired non-police employees at this time.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, N six.
I move to approve the following property tax rebonds.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to move to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters concerning collective bargaining, and that attendance in the executive session shall be limited to the members of the town council and the town manager at twenty after eight.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?